All right. Call order meeting, let's have roll call for.
Third time.
Kerry Chapler.
It wells.
All right, we have four. The meeting has called to order, let's have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, might we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Certainly, I just ask for if there was a motion to approve the consent agenda that's on the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I do. I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Consent agenda is approved. Public comments?
I do not have any.
Okay. All right, first item on the agenda is old business, which is application for a certificate of appropriateness to replace windows on a church building at 312 Washington Avenue. Is there a representative that wants to speak or say anything on the subject?
You should be out there.
Want to get a speech?
Yeah, you want to, is there anything else you want to say or anything you want to add?
Yes. Sign and line and give us a picture.
We recognize another member of the congregation.
Good evening, I'm Diane Davis, 601 Jefferson Avenue, Kate Charles, a member of the Southern Church of Christ's Circus before Washington Avenue.
And who is this Diane?
I am here and I'm speaking because I am concerned about our church. We are a membership of four and it has taken us seven years to actually get someone to be willing to do those windows that we are talking about. As you know, with all the buildings and things that are going around town, it's so hard for people to do small jobs and we finally got someone like you. Now with the windows and then the thinking, because of fact the windows were needed, we did change the size and those type things and I was real surprised that we hadn't come before you. But we're doing what we have to do. But hopefully you may help us out in some way. We've already put the money into those windows and they're just right now sitting on the floor. Hopefully we will be able to get them done before the main season starts for summer. And I know you have a problem getting somebody to continue to work with us on that. So hopefully as you go through whatever you have to do, you will consider what we have against at this particular point. And I appreciate the time which is given. Thank you.
Oh, questions from, if you don't mind. Questions?
I know we were discussing possibly working with the applicants about the vinyl windows as opposed to using the existing wood windows. And I'm not sure.
Well, we had, a couple of the members had discussed, the board had discussed a couple of possibilities to do and I'll just throw these questions out to see what you think about them. If, if we could arrange for the windows to be restored and repaired at no additional cost to you, would that be satisfactory to you?
Which one, the old ones restored?
Right.
Have the ones that sit on the floor that we paid for at this time?
Well, the idea behind restoring them would be that we'd get to keep the original windows.
You need to talk about the vinyl windows.
The ones that are in purchase.
They, they wouldn't be used. So what?
Okay, now you're saying you over-hated them.
I'm saying, I'm asking if that is a satisfactory result. If they could be repaired and made serviceable and air tight and oyster tight and all that kind of stuff without any additional cost to you, would that be acceptable?
Now, when you say additional cost, that means that we would not have to pay her any more money?
I think we would have to negotiate and work with you about, you would certainly have some cost to install the windows that you have, right?
Okay, I'm lost. Okay, well, I'm gonna have one that's on the floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, what about the ones that you said that are on the floor now that you said are vinyl?
They wouldn't be used. So, well, I know it may sound a bit confusing, let's, let's back up and maybe I can ask a couple of questions.
Sir, could I ask you a question?
You serve the king.
Have you been by and looked at those windows?
I have.
Yes.
Those windows are fifty years old and deteriorated and not quite the worth for them. I'll leave it at that, but you take a good look. You gonna need more than restoration?
Well, this would be something you'd have to agree to. So, I'm just, we're just throwing out a possibility here. Just trying to find a resolution. We, we understand the, the financial issue at hand. What we're hoping to do or what we're, we have discussed is the possibility of finding a way to keep those windows without adding to your costs. That's what we're trying to do. I don't know if it's possible.
Keep the windows that are in there or the new ones?
Yes, keeping the windows that are in there.
But you're saying without adding to our costs?
Right. So I assume, let's, let's say you, hypothetically, you were approved to install the windows that you have sitting on the floor. There must be some cost associated with installing those, right?
Yes.
Okay, so?
No.
No. So that's gonna be volunteer work or?
He's supposed to do a father, a father scan, any more, any more money. Hey, I'll jump and hopefully he doesn't change his mind, but he's supposed to be doing a father scan, any more money for this.
So you've already paid, and if I'm, you have too much in your business, just tell me, but, so you've already paid him to install it?
So we have paid for the windows and all because there was a mix-up. He agreed to do everything, so we've already paid that.
I just, I don't have a quad here.
Mr. Diane, what, if I can try to help. What Kerry, what the chairman is trying to explain to you is that they were gonna come up with a way to restore the windows that you have existing in the building for a limited amount of cost. So what he's asking is if you had the windows and you paid for the windows, was there an additional cost to install the new windows that you have in the church on the floor?
What happened, the addition, the windows that we actually ordered, he ordered, he did not order the ones that we actually agreed to. So in order to cover that because they were higher, he agreed to put everything in as it is based on what we'd already paid.
So it's time for a motion, motion of additional options there together.
Do you understand what?
Yeah. Do you understand what I said?
I do. I mean, I think I understand. There was a mix-up in the cost of the windows. The windows were ordered. The contractor agreed that there was a mistake, but he agreed to put them in. In addition, he, his labor was covered in the cost of the windows.
Right, because we had to pay a little more, that's what we had anticipated.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, now I understand.
The contractor has agreed to install at this expense. And we are, I gave him a tax deductible receipt so that he can at least nothing off his tax. Those windows that are in there, you'd be sick because you can restore those particular windows. Now, the contractor did say that he would put those new windows, though they are made of plastic, that he would put a adoption material to those windows, as you would know, that were classic windows under there and they have the appearance and everything as the wooden windows. But if you think, well, let's just say, seriously speaking, you can't restore wood that's been there fifty years. Not restore the wood. Replace it yet. It's like me at eighty-seven years old. I mean, I, I got a lot of going for me, but.
I would agree that you're not replacing it either.
I'm replacing it, but we're restoring it, that's what you're talking about.
We, we wouldn't want, we wouldn't want to replace it, so. So, does anybody have a date on when the church was built?
Nineteen fifty-one.
Nineteen fifty-one. Okay, so here's the other thing that came up. Do you have any more? Yeah, you want to read?
Mike Stroup submitted his comments. He said, "I would vote to again table this."
Be go.
"I would vote to again table this request so that we might seek an opinion from the town council on the specific request with respect to a non-contributing structure in the historic district overlay. The town council has requested separate guidelines for non-contributing structures and I suspect on the matter of the window replacement, they might be a little more lenient than if it were a contributing structure." Again, that's from board member, board member Michael Stroup, who was absent tonight.
So, doing some research on this, the building apparently does not show up on either the original list on two thousand, is that right, on the date, nor the most recent. It doesn't show up on either one of those lists. So, I did confirm that with DHR today, that it does not show up on either of those lists. So it is by definition, because it's not on those lists, by that definition, it would be considered a non-conformant. But our guidelines and section and article eight of the code does say it's really based upon age, which is fifty years. So we have a conflict here to make a decision. That's the, that's all the other information that I have on contributing versus non-contributing and the age of the building. But I did look through article eight again today and it does say fifty years. It's one of the last things it says in the definition. I know that is proposed to be changed, but we use the guidelines currently.
May I make a statement, ask a question? Certainly. Now, my understanding, your complaint is that they are classic windows and you want wood.
Well, let me, let me be a little, let me refine that a little bit for you.
Okay.
The issue that we have is that the guidelines specifically forbid taking out original windows and replacing them with something that's not matching exactly what was there.
As you said, matching?
Right.
Appearance or what?
In materials, design and construction.
Design is basically there. The material, the contractor has planned that you wouldn't be able to look at those new windows and tell that they weren't wooden material. And that's basically what you complained about, that we put these classic windows with wood. And if you couldn't not look at plastic and tell it's plastic, it's something wrong with your thinking, I mean. Or if you could tell the difference, I mean, I can see it, but if you can't tell the difference, I mean.
I think where the, I'll, I'll speak what I think can make other members on the board may feel differently. The fundry that we find ourselves in is that this will be used in every meeting coming down the road if we agree to allow vinyl windows to be, have wooden windows replaced with vinyl windows. Every applicant that comes forward that wants to change their windows is gonna use that. They're gonna say, "Well, you let this group do it. You let this one do it. You let that one do it." Now, where, where there is some distinction here is the question of contributing or non-contributing. Unfortunately, our guidelines don't make that distinction. So, it's, it's just been a, a proposed change to the section eight code, article eight, article eight, I'm sorry, article eight in the code. So it's not that we don't want you or anybody else to do something that works for it. It's just that we, we worry about setting a precedent and that's been a strong issue with, with this board is trying to, to administer the guidelines fairly, uniformly and without sort of crossing one side or the other. So, we're struggling right now to find a way to make this work for you and that's, that's what we're trying to do.
And then, and right to what you're saying, the difference is this is a church that we are not planning to get rid of. We're not gonna sell it for profits. Nothing that we're going to do other than to have our services. And now I know some of the precedents have been set throughout the town, we know that. But what we're talking about at this time, this is a church that we, of this small membership, one thing that we are trying to write now, there are the things that we need to do, but we have to work according to our means and this is why we try to at least get the windows down.
Can we make an exception to the rules for religious institutions only?
I think it would have to be if the guidelines are in the code.
We just can't make up something like that. I mean, I was thinking along those lines myself.
No, no, the question is.
My guess would be, I don't know.
If we're looking for an exception to the rule.
I think it would have to be in the article. I don't think we can.
Not if we make an exception to the rule. You're striking a precedent. There's no good precedent. It has to be a religious structure.
Yeah, but we're making it up, yeah. And you could just make up an exception for all buildings that are green. We want, we want to do this. All the buildings are blue, we want to do that. For all the ones that are Victorian or ones that are forestware.
I know what you're saying. I agree with what you're saying. It's not, it's just, I think, yeah. To me, the only option is, is to either deny or approve because it's not a contributing structure. So.
Now, I don't see any other way.
And, and so, you know, we know what the consequences.
We know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
We have two other window proposals coming up and it's similar to this, but it's not a church, a working church right now and these people are gonna use your.
And ask your question. You said coming up?
Yep.
This is not coming up, this is yet.
I know, I know.
But you understand, what, what's gonna happen is if we, if we say, okay, it's okay for you to do it, the next guy walks in the door, he's gonna say, "Well, why can't we have it? Because you let somebody else have it." That's the struggle that, that begins.
Is that, who's, who's his name? Is he here now?
Who's that?
That other man with the other building.
No, he's not here tonight. I don't think so. No, he's on vacation. Tell him next month.
And that would be a church also?
No, it's a residence. It was a church, which is.
Well, he's going to be making money off of it and we are not making money.
Yeah, it's just our guidelines don't have a, I, I think we could back this around forever, but I think we need to call for a motion. Anybody want to take a stab at what you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, if there's anything else that y'all want to add. Go ahead.
Have you, have you wanted to approve my?
You have to work.
Yeah.
What?
You have to work to get the motion.
All right. I'll make a motion since apparently I can do so.
Good, yes.
I make a motion that we approve this certificate of appropriateness based on the fact that the building is not listed in either of the reports and that the glass in the windows is gonna remain the same as the glass that is existing. Correct? The glass is the same, it's the same style of glass?
Yes, it's the same. That's identical.
Maybe, but I think that might help us a little bit on. It's not same glass, it's clear, but it's padded.
Okay.
Yep, all right. So I'll, I'll repeat that. I make a motion that we approve certificate of appropriateness based on the fact that it is considered a non-contributing building because it's not listed in either of the, the two surveys and also the code, the glass in the windows is being, is, is being reproduced exactly in color, definition and style.
Texture.
I'll second that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
So we can put the windows in?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Application for certificate of appropriateness to construct a new single-family detached dwelling at 406 Jefferson Avenue. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Hold on. Your name?
It's Ian, Ian Wood, Angel Y T.
And you're owner?
Yes. Oh, one of them, that's my father and his wife.
You're not the contractor, that, that would mean a distinction. What about you? Do you have anything you want to?
No, I was just gonna make it Tracy and Jeb, I know that Zach kind of leaving there, everybody stepping up. I grew up in a very small town in North City, New York, had about eight hundred people, so it's part of the charm of life which is Kate Charles and everybody coming together. When one person leaves, it's a, it's a little comment. So thank you guys all for that. And Tracy, great communication with my church before I drove down here from Richmond. Did you get a problem with me? Maybe three of her showed up despite the Corona, so.
Oh, I already had.
How are you doing?
Yeah.
I think you shook my hand.
Go on, Herb. Okay, any questions from the, from the members? Or anything else you had about the construction?
No, I was just about to tell my mom I'm gonna be a nice boy.
Questions?
Who did the pre-act?
Herb and Zach.
I just had a question. I think maybe Jeb can answer. I can't seem to find out how the code is for the third floor.
So, the way, the way it's written, it was on my email, many words, it says up to, up to two and a half stories and or forty feet. So the way we always create a half story, there's no really definition, but kind of all the plans are built on the same page. Basically, half the square footage of the floor below. So, that's what I kind of made him adjust is.
Square one?
Is that in ordinance? That is, that is in his own. Under, under the R1 district regulations, what you are.
So the third floor of living space, the way the town repurposed it has to be half the square footage.
Right. That's, that's essentially why it's a two and a half, it says two and a half stories. We don't, we don't have a definition. It's a half a story. It's not half the living space, it's the actual. Half the square footage. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's why he had to adjust the square footage on the application.
Do you need, do you have any details on what these four rails are gonna look like?
So that was in my, my show up sheet that I made out with that, how the rails would be, it was synthetic material. I don't know if it's gonna be an AZAC or it's gonna be, you know, like the vinyl, but everything on the outside would be a hardy or synthetic material.
So is the front door kind of screen door on it in this drawing or is that?
That is just, it's just the exterior door. We're not.
exterior door. The, the mountains on the windows, what's that design?
Define that first. Oh, the grid, the.
Yeah, the header.
On the roof. Oh, sorry. I can get more information. It's, it's, in Congress, I would think it'd fall more to like a four over four versus a six over six pattern. I guess it's a four over four. Is there, I want to fit within the town view. Is there like, is a four over zero?
Are you asking about where will that go?
Like the bottom.
Well, I can get to the exterior, but I was just wondering.
In his west, he does say.
Oh, sorry. What we talked about, they would have to get, but not inside, the double paint glass is gonna be on the, the outside.
Is that true, the doors, I think the?
That'll be on the doors, everything. Herb was very clear with that.
They'll all be the same.
That's what we'll do. That's right. I didn't know if you had a number of.
So are the columns round or square?
They're gonna be square.
Does drawing show the round? If I'm not mistaken.
Let me just make sure I can get on that carpet. A ten inch square column is on page one, with an arrow kind of pointing to the second floor column.
Okay, I guess maybe it's the.
It, it may appear that it's gonna be a square column.
Okay. Other questions?
Well, what is the grid actually on the, on the windows? On the bottom slash and the top slash?
Um, I will, I will say two over two.
Your drawing says four over four.
Oh, sorry, four, I apologize. Four over, four over four.
So be built as the drawing shows.
Built as the drawing.
We, I mean, we normally have the bottom slash clear, don't we?
If you would prefer that. I, I don't have a dog in this home. If you tell me that, I gotta tell my sister I want this four over two. I'm, I'm no joke, like I'd love to get a one on her. So yes, I will definitely tell her that.
I don't want to be involved.
No, 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 she already doesn't like me. My wife doesn't like me.
I don't think there's anything that would tell you it has to be that.
Okay, I'll do that.
Honestly, you guys have been great. If you want four over two, I have no problem with it.
Happy wife's a happy wife.
Well, my wife, yeah, she already doesn't like me.
I don't mind.
That's why she only had five kids.
Other, other questions?
That's six one.
No, I did, I did the pre-act with you.
Do we have a motion?
I have, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion now to approve certificate of appropriateness for 406 Jefferson Avenue as shown on the plan submitted.
Anybody have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
I truly appreciate that.
Tracy and Kevin, thank you guys so much. Okay, um, application for a modification to a certificate of appropriateness to renovate a commercial storefront at 206 Jefferson Avenue. My name is.
My name is Eddie Mayer, 206 Madison Avenue.
Thank you. Anything you want to bring us up to date on?
I want to make a correction to the email that I sent. I think in there I stated that there was a discussion about renovating the existing windows. We did have a very early discussion and determined that they're not repairable and the original design.
You say, well, who determined that?
Well, that just weren't existing. I mean, they were re, re, sorry, we started it. My, remember now.
All, all I meant was, I guess, like a question, was that a decision or a discussion that was brought?
It was a discussion in the very, very first application that I made in this, to this review board. You actually brought up that you're about to see those renovated and I said my, my, my application was that I did not want any windows at all. And you said you preferred to see them restored and I said that they're just gonna, they're just couldn't, they were just in such bad shape. In fact, some of them have been tiled or with a window open, so they were in a position to be restored and I didn't want to put new windows in in the first place. So that was a, that was in the very first application that I made. In fact, discussion at that point was even talking about what could happen if the windows. point was even talking about what could happen if the windows were out and people poured out the windows, and I said, no, we had a window hunkers, we had code. There was discussion that I didn't need code, put a rating in, and you even mentioned possibly that that would have to be visible. There was further discussion that, I think Diane mentioned, that the horizontal of a double sash, of a double hunk window is what was worrying the most, that that would disappear if all the windows were out, taken away, the appearance of sash windows. So there was discussion, I think, horizontal piece, and I said, I would consider doing that. Part of that application was to modify the storefront at the bottom, which at that time my application was, I think it was postponed, but denied, yes, it was deferred, and that was on May the 21st. I was committed on the design by you and Mr. Eden, but it seemed like the bigger concern at that time was the storefront. So I was asked to come back with some other ideas, and I came back with a scope wanting to leave the windows out at the top, and some different idea of the storefront down at the bottom, that was denied because of the historic nature of the windows and the windows at the bottom and the skirting. I was thought to come back, which at the, the year was on June 18th last year, and I agreed to do everything that you wanted on the storefront, there was no change in anything on the storefront, the windows, the monuments, the skirting, everything which you, I found that you were happy with my decision on that. We had come up with an opportunity to, which was approved, to add windows in the lodges that would open up, and the ability to open up, and either open up and out, open up completely, side by side, something that would have an appearance of a sash window, when it was covered, or an ability to allow me to open it out. I, which, and I appreciate that, that was the one concession of all of this that I was given through this whole process, which I appreciate that there was some kind of concession. I did consider during construction failures, that as owner of this building, and in part this community, and knowing what the, what was the building outside, I thought about what it would look like. I thought about standing outside and looking up at this building and seeing maybe three windows open, three half open and three forty closed, that would be completely not what this wall would look like, even though it didn't prove, because the concern was the reflection of the glass and the horizontal nature of the sash window. So even though it approved to put a window in and to open completely then, and create the opening that I was looking for, for the lodger, I felt that it was not the right thing to do, and I rather put the sash windows back, feeling that I was satisfied with it. Apparently, I got a surprise letter from Jeb that you had sent to Mr. Grossman, that you felt that I was not claiming what was approved and you regret. I didn't put those shop drawings in because that is not what I installed, I didn't install that because I felt the sash window that the board would prefer that I didn't install. So I apologize for submitting shop drawings, but I thought I was doing the right thing by putting back sash windows because the building now looks like it did in nineteen ninety. The storefront, not doing anything with, in fact, from going one further on that to the, I was doing okay to a case order of the aprons, as long as I produce a sample. But even further to that, Mr. Hubbard, owner of the building before I did the furniture a couple of years ago, pointed out to me that one of the stone pieces you could just make up, that match was a neighbor of the, one of the original companies that was there, and I thought I was just going to take that out. So there are two pieces of skirting that are, one's even missing or damaged, two pieces are missing, and one that's damaged, I can actually take that and replace the shorter piece, which for me, I only need to replace two at the front. And once I find a product that's close enough that matches either one of the stones that are broken, and I haven't found it yet.
Questions?
No, I could.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Again, this is from Michael Schruppe, did not come to tonight's meeting. He said, "I sat on a bench near the Veterans Memorial across the street from Parsons Building and studied the windows carefully. The fiberglass, the fiberglass windows appeared to be sufficiently similar to the wood windows, so as not to constitute a visual distraction. While I wouldn't support the changes being made without a certificate of modification, this request for modification appears to be in order and I would like to approve it."
Next question.
I couldn't remember what we initially approved with the windows, but as people speak, I kind of came back.
I went back and made a copy of the original, and so I'll just read that for everybody. So the motion was, was made to approve the certificate of appropriateness at 201 Mason Avenue to modify the exterior commercial building submitted with the condition that the following would be provided: shop drawings of the windows and doors, sample of stone to be used, any additions such as on is needed to be seen as well. Motion was approved, and that is spoken.
So your, your problem is that the shop drawings are not provided, and the windows are not.
I think we would have never approved replacing those windows with another product.
No.
Especially the frames. So now we've lost the frames, the windows, every.
The frames were deteriorated already, I mean, there were no frames to work with in the first place. And the fact that you got to take into consideration that I put a horizontal piece of the, Jeb had thought that you were open to somebody, which you were, because you gave me your proof, meaning a window that was, that I could open out, and I just think that opening it out, based on what you told me about the horizontal sash appearance and the reflectiveness of the window, I didn't think that it was going to look like. And I took it upon myself to try and satisfy this board and the town by putting sash windows back. So the shop drawings that I was supposed to produce, for the door, for the windows that we can leave out or if they're not will have, will side by side, but I didn't do that.
Well, the reason, in my opinion, I'm speaking, my opinion, for warning the shop drawings was to prevent exactly what's happened. So something was done that the board wouldn't have approved initially. So that was the reason behind the shop drawings. If you had come in with the shop drawings and said, the ones, we changed our minds about how, what we want to do with the windows, and here's the window that we want to install, the board would have voted based upon those shop drawings.
And I apologize for that, because that's what I did.
I mean, that's, I mean, nobody's looking to, I mean, that's just watering the bridge. But I mean, that was the whole reason and the whole problem, or the whole idea, was to prevent us finding ourselves in the position that we're in now.
That's what I did, and I did by putting in what you had wanted, when that was approved. Because I think what was approved while, what I preset was your proof, I think it was less than what I put in, that's what my proofing was. So I tried to either act it or put it in the search for it, and I presented up with that.
Well, let's, let's just take a look at the guidelines, and that way it'll help all of us to understand more of it all. So if we go to page nineteen, number two, "The historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved. Removal of historic materials or alteration of features and spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided." That's why we were trying to keep the frames, the components of the window, because there were windows, I was in that building before work was ever started there, when it was for sale. And there were a number of frames that were in reasonably good condition, and there were a number of windows sashed, that were in good condition, and they were the original windows.
Okay, I'll just, this, respected this review through that, because.
Well, I mean, that's, that's.
In fact, I was so concerned when I took possession of the building, because my liability suddenly was a huge liability with the way that those windows, there were pieces of sash that were hanging out, and the loss was about to drop out, about to step onto the cycle.
Well, unfortunately, none of us, I mean, they're gone, so we can't, we can't argue that point. I mean, that's, that's.
I understand, I understand, but even for two new guidelines, what you approved to don't match the guidelines you've related to that. What you approved, if they're open those windows, those guidelines are off. There is no reflectiveness, there is no sash window, once somebody opens that window, and this is why I decided to put sash windows back, because the sash windows were probably the original view of this building. What was approved was that somebody that could open out, that would bring up anything out.
Maybe I'm missing something here, but I don't know what was approved at this point.
Nothing was approved, other than that windows could be altered, but we had to see shop drawings to see what that was going to be.
But what was, what was approved was that these windows were allowed to be, you know, open.
We discussed an option, several options about how the windows could be modified. But the reason for the shop drawings is so that we, we could determine which of those options, along with you, would work well, but we can get that opportunity. So, but let me continue with the, with the guidelines. So on that same page, number six, "Deteriorated historic features shall be repaired rather than replaced. Where the severity of deterioration required replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature shall match the old in its design, color, texture, and other visual qualities and where possible materials. Replacement of missing features shall be substantiated by documentary, physical, or pictorial evidence." Moving on to page forty-one. Oops, sorry. Look in your papers here. I can't find anything here. Page forty-one, number two, "Is repair original windows and doors by patching, splicing, consolidating, or otherwise reinforcing the original material." Number three, "Uncover and repair covered up windows and doors, reinstalling the windows and doors that have been removed." Number four, "Consider replacing windows and doors only when they are missing or beyond repair. Restructure should be, reconstruction should be based on physical evidence or old photographs. Do not use replacement windows or doors that substantially change the size, blacing pattern, finish, depth of reveal, appearance of the frame, or mutton configuration."
So the only thing that's changed is the, anything else was declared?
You don't have the same exterior trim, because you took the frame, the frame's gone.
There's a problem, there's the threat that they're out there.
Number forty-seven, or page forty-seven, number one, "Retain all elements, materials, and features that are original to the building or are sensitive, remodeling and repairing as necessary." Page forty-eight, number four, "Restore as many original elements as possible, particularly the materials, windows, decorative details, and corners." So I mean, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items that specifically speak to keeping everything, and if it's deteriorated, you have to replace it with what was there. You can't just replace it with something else.
There are groups that I could put a window in, like an open up and out. I didn't think that was the right thing to do, so.
But the reason we wanted to see the drawings was because we wanted the frames retained, and we didn't want them altered.
The frames couldn't be retained, there were no frames to retain, so my, the, what you approved to me, so in other words, what you approved, you would have disapproved of the shop drawings, even if they were, shop drawings of windows that can open out by accident.
If they, if they involve removing the frames and completely altering the system, we would, I mean, I can't speak for that, but.
Then I understand why you approved it in the first place, because it clearly says that I had, I had approval on these options, open it up.
That the approval is conditional on seeing shop drawings of what you're going to use, it doesn't say.
My point is, I would have submitted the shop drawings of any one of those options, and I would have been turned out, so why would you approve it?
You can't assume that. You can't assume that. So, other questions?
Well, these are the ones that we circled, everything we read from that night that we had the meeting again, everything that I have circled in the book, even to the last page, it's a drag, what page are we on, forty-eight?
Yep.
Even three, four, and five, forty-five, reconstruction, is all in the guidelines, the existing guidelines, not changed guidelines.
So I understand, but if they approved for me as a last part, it was not, was a window that was, can open up, you know, out, and, and, and it doesn't match what, to me, it didn't appear that it was going to be, that needless to be, ultimately looking for with the sash window. I was pretty mad that I thought it was a basic strip back, which was better than what had been approved, and if I did what I was incorrect, it's my fault, but I was trying to do the right thing. I've been trying to, the board, I can't tell you how many times, I've invested two million dollars in this project. I have, I have, I, I gave it to, I've sensed that I, the storefront, I said, that's fine, let's go ahead and I'll do what anybody wanted to do in the storefront, nothing's changed, I'm trying to preserve a different frame than what I'm after. When I look at that building, I look at the picture, I look at what we did before, because those windows are fifteen, twenty feet up in the head, and that's not bad for an excuse. I've just said, these were open, the windows had been approved, if we're not satisfied at the time.
Questions, comments, or objections?
Well, I don't understand what the consequences are that we can, I don't understand, at this point in time, what the consequences are, I understand that you said you were sorry, but you didn't follow the rules. The rules were that you were supposed to supply us with shop drawings of the new windows, okay? So you didn't do that. So now we're set in a position where we're in a, we're in a non-compromising position, where we're following the book, which we have to follow.
I understand that, so, but the book wasn't followed when it was approved, but my point was, is that I'm trying to, I was trying to, I was trying to make it clear that the work was approved. I was approved a window that could open out, open out, open in, and create an opening without the horizontal sash, without the reflectiveness of the window. That was completely against my whole concept of what I wanted to do, right from the get go, it was a logic, and I understand, and there were some ideas of what I could present, even to the point in the beginning, there was thought about just a horizontal piece that could be made up, which was a very real possibility, the only reason at that time it wasn't accepted was because the storefront was, was a bigger issue, and that postponed or deferred until later on. The ultimate decision was that the storefront had no changes, the windows at the top, I was allowed to put these windows in and open up out of bed to do this complete opening, which I appreciate the consideration of the board that they, they were trying to work with me to give the openness feeling that I was looking for originally. I particular upon myself that I didn't think it was right to do that, that would not work, the way that it should work, that I put the sash windows. I, I understand I should have done the shop work, but I was thinking it was the shop drawings or what was supposed to put in, not the sash windows that I thought I was putting back the right way. So I feel like that I was approved on something that wasn't necessarily according to the guidelines.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but I don't see how you can assume you were approved when you didn't follow the direction of the board. That's my question. And I don't know how you can give me an answer for that.
I think, unless we have something, I don't, I don't think we can, there's not much we can do, I don't think there's anything guidelines that can say it there enough.
That's the question, I mean, there's no consequence.
If you deny the certificate of appropriateness, which is what we're being asked to approve and modification, then there has, there has to be some return to the board with something that overperformed. So, I mean, we're, we're going to be in the same position right here that we're going to be with the church. So if, if we say, okay, they're already done, so there's nothing we can do about it, then what's to stop the next person from intentionally doing this?
I agree.
That's.
Well, maybe there should be something in the guidelines that.
Well, maybe there should be something in the guidelines that lets us, allow us to have some kind of consequences, maybe a fine of some sort.
There's no fine schedule in the town.
We can't, yeah, that's, as far as it sounds, there's no... So in this case, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, you, you could propose a conditional approval based on some conditions, I don't know what they'd be, or you can, you can, you can make a motion to approve, or you can make a motion to deny, if there's another option.
I'm not sure.
What?
It's, what, I'm not sure what, what we can do.
A motion to deny, at this point would mean that Mr. Brady would not be able to give me a certificate of occupancy, and as you know, the economy that we're about to head into right now, it is not that great. I've spent two million dollars on this project, I'm struggling to get it done. I'm hoping that I can sell enough that I can at least stay a point, but if it's denied, then I can't finish it and I can't get any sash done, I, I'm not sure.
But you, you do understand what we're talking about.
I understand, and I apologize, and I, and I...
What, what I mean is that if, if this is approved, and it's, it's a board decision, it's not something I or me simply may not do, either way, if this is approved, a, a person can intentionally do what you've done.
Mr. Sherwood, I, I understand what you're saying.
And, and we have, we have no, we have no footing to say that.
I, I understand what you're saying, and of course, not my intention to be unintentional, because my, my intention was to put in something that the board approved. The fact that it's, I'm telling you, I'm not correct about it, I, I honestly was taken aback when I, when I, when I was called, Mr. Brady, to come and see me, and the town manager, and sort of led it, that he received.
I mean, how many windows are, I don't remember.
The fourteen.
Yeah, it's fourteen.
It's a lot of them.
Well, let me ask you a question. Are you able to change them?
I, I, I'm not about to lose the project business. What the board has made me do, I've spent my money that I've been having...
Well, but let's, let's, I, I understand, we want to get to a decision. Do they wood interior windows?
Not that much. I have, I have, I have, I have a, a gift that's finished coming around the side, so I'm still trying to allow those people to list. If I can open them, offer them a complete opening, then at least the bottom sash can open up to the height and, and allow the weather to come in, if they want to close in, they can close them. If they don't want to close them, it can still rain into the space and it's still got power and it's still raining. My, my concept is still somewhat there, but it's not as close to what I was hoping to be.
Do, do they open all the way?
That, 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 that double sash window, that one's up and the top one drains down.
So they're fully functional, top and bottom?
Yes. Just, just after the word was...
Well, we need a motion.
Well, let me run this by you. Since there's no consequence, right, and he's already done it, we can't make him take him out.
You can't, because if you don't approve a certificate of appropriateness...
He's going to go to the town council.
But you can't, I mean, the problem with that, Herb, is if, if we try to determine what the, the weather of the town council is, as to the decision, we, we, we could be here all night to debate what's going to be what. You either have to make a decision based upon what, what we feel the guidelines intend and what they say, and then if, if the applicant doesn't agree with it, appeal is certainly their option, and if town council overturns it, that's their option.
Could we word it in such a way that, that he wouldn't hit, not following our recommendation? And, you know, this is the consequences. I know exactly what Herb said, I know where you're coming from also. I just, we'd like to eliminate that next step.
That's, they're going to take it.
Well, unless we prove it.
Okay, well, I agree with Perry that we cannot anticipate the movement of the town council. However, I make a motion that we deny the conditional occupancy.
You, you, you need to go with what's, what his application is for.
Okay, I make a motion that the application for modification to a certification of appropriateness be denied.
For the address?
What, what?
The address.
The address of...
Which right there.
Two One Nine Mason Avenue.
Is there a second? Okay, motion by, it was carried, if you have another motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, just because it would be a financial hardship to remove all the windows, it goes against the code and the guidelines, but in this particular case, I think we have to approve on a case-by-case basis. You're lucky.
Do we have a second? Okay, motion is going to fail because there's not a second.
So where does that leave us?
Well, you have the right to make a motion.
I do have the right to make a motion, I guess.
No, they said you did.
Yeah, I switched what you said.
They're struggling to say that.
I'm sorry, that was not my intention to, to, to...
I, I mean, I'm in the construction industry myself and I, I understand the realities of this, it's just, there's nothing pleasant about it at all, but we have, we're just going to anybody to go at it.
Well, I'm not, Ed, no disrespect, man, but I don't understand how you can use a hardship, a financial hardship as an excuse for doing wrong.
No, I'm not trying to, but it has to be included. I mean, you know, I'm just trying to ease the pain a little bit.
I understand.
Well, I want to make a motion based on my, my thoughts about the, the whole thing. Preservation of the windows is what we were really after, and preservation of the frames is what we're... The Park Service and their standards are very clear about how you can modify windows and still retain their historical integrity, that's what we're looking for with the shop drawings. So I'm going to make a motion that we deny a certificate of appropriateness for modification at two and nine Mason Avenue.
One second.
We have a second. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, any other business? Will we be, is there any thought towards the end of future meetings at this moment? The other closing, around here?
Darren, as soon as I find out from our county attorney, I'll definitely email you and call.
Okay. All right. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All right.